You guys just sit there in the back of the room and that was it?
What's that?
Yesterday. William, San Diego.
I wish they had this.
I'll just pull one because I have a question on the road.
What?
That was 28.
Okay.
So just 26.
Yeah, he was down there. No, he was down with his girlfriend.
He got home before mine.
Got there first.
Having a good time doing stuff at the airport.
So Memorial didn't make it to the next round, huh?
Yeah.
The what?
Was that surprised?
Uh, that's always got a pretty good team in a bigger school.
Oh, I know. I don't know how you guys compete for them.
Yeah.
I don't know how you guys played D2.
And we're going to the track next year.
Good morning. Welcome to the December 1st Board of Supervisors meeting. If you would please stand with me as we salute the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation and one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Be seated. Our first item of business this morning is a pleasant one, recognizing a local and county business for 30 years of continuous service and publication in our county. I'd like to call forward Mr. Rick Elkins to, Rick, we'd like to hear what you have to say before we make a presentation to you. We do have a proclamation, but we'd like to hear a little bit about your success story.
Well, first of all, I want to thank the county for recognizing us. It's a nice honor for us and we didn't expect it, so we really appreciate it. As you know, The Valley Voice was established in 1979, in November of 1979, as a monthly publication. It was established by John Lint and Craig Lindeman and Carmelita Jarvis-Kahn and existed as a monthly paper for a number of years and finally went twice a month in the mid-'90s. And then two years ago, we went weekly. So over the 30-year history of The Valley Voice, it has grown in not only a number of issues per year, but also in stature. We feel we're one of the leading news sources of the county. We work awful hard to provide local, fair, balanced coverage of all issues in Tulare County, not just the county, but City of Isalia, City of Tulare. We have established the Tulare Voice as a section of The Valley Voice. That was done a few years ago. About five years ago, not quite, about four years ago, The Valley Voice, John Lint, who had bought out Carmelita and Craig Lindeman a number of years ago, sold shares of The Valley Voice and we have now six owners of The Valley Voice. Two of them are here and I'd like to introduce Lloyd Pace and Russell Doe. They're two of the owners. The other one is Brian Blaine and Mel Hire and another member of the board who represents 10 other investors out of Tulare is Robert Reynolds. And of course, John Lint still owns part of the, still owns a share of the paper. John's focus is he's moved to the coast, so he still provides information and stories for us, but he's pretty much backed out of the business and retired. But, you know, to the credibility of John, he set the standard for this paper many, many years ago and held that standard for many years and it's a challenge for us as the new staff to continue that standard. It's not an easy one because we're known for having the news that nobody else has and that's something you have to, it was easy maybe to do that once or twice a month, a little harder to do it every week, but I think we do a pretty good job. But anyhow, I just do want, I do want to thank you. I appreciate this very much and hopefully we'll be around for a 60th anniversary as well.
Well, I'd like to highlight something you said, Rick, and which we appreciate is local, fair, and balanced reporting that your paper does. We appreciate that. You seem to not have an agenda of your own, which is appreciated, you're reporting the news, which is what, in this supervisor's opinion, a news reporter ought to do, so I'll meet you down here.
I think I'd also like to point out that The Valley Voice has four of the longest, five, four out of the five longest-standing journalists in Tulare County. Miles Schuper, who you all know, has been around, I think, since we, before the automobile was invented. Of course, John Lint goes back to 1979. I go back to 1976 when I started with the Dinuba Sentinel, worked a number of years in Porterville. Julie Fernandez, our editor of Tulare, has been in that town since about 1974, '75. So there's a lot of history, a lot of knowledge of this county that's all in one paper today, which is, which is really advantageous for us.
You did forget one of the employees here that was with Miles when dirt was invented, and that was Steve Offman. Rick, if you come around, I'd like to present this proclamation to you honoring The Valley Voice for 30 years of continuous publication. So, Rick, congratulations. We do hope to see you 30 years from now. At least I do.
Me too, me too.
Well, I didn't know Miles was a photographer.
You guys got a kiss in the under?
No, this is it.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, you know, Rick and I go a long ways back. In fact, he bought a car from me when he was working for the Porterville Quarter and, but has always been a very above-board person, quality person, and I'd like to congratulate all of you on a job well done. I know I like reading The Valley Voice and it seems like you guys are on the cutting edge and seem to know everything before everybody else does. So congratulations on this award. It's well-deserved.
When I was in the commercial real estate business years ago, we used to take the Kiplinger Report that would give you kind of a heads up on what businesses were coming into the valley. There, I believe they were always behind The Valley Voice. The Valley Voice had the most complete information about what was happening on a business level in Tulare County or in the valley. And we relied upon The Valley Voice, and I still do, like Supervisor Ennis said, that you often have, your news often precedes general knowledge of new developments and new businesses coming into Tulare County. And it's been a very valuable asset to those people in the real estate business and those people who are interested in what's happening in Tulare County. So congratulations.
I can recall as a young supervisor, getting calls from John Lint and he was always sort of on a fishing expedition to find out, you know, if I knew of anything as possible. But I would have to say that I concur with my colleagues that if I want to find out what's happening, particularly from a business standpoint in Tulare County, I pick up The Valley Voice and find out about it. But not only do I find out about it, but I find out that there's a depth to the article as well. It's not just a headline, but it also goes into great detail oftentimes about what's coming, what's happening, and it's most appreciated. Thank you very much for your contribution to our county.
Thank you. Supervisor Ennis. I would just like to reiterate the congratulations given by my fellow colleagues, Rick, John, all of The Valley Voice shareholders. Congratulations on 30 years of great news service to the county. I sure appreciate, from my own personal perspective, and I know my constituents appreciate it as well, the fact that you do not have a personal agenda and that you present the news the way that it should be presented as news. And that's a really great resource to have in our county. So congratulations on that and I wish you the best next 30 years and hopefully you will make that 60 years and, you know, I can, I won't be able to say that I've been alive as long as The Valley Voice has been here, but I will be able to say that I enjoyed the, hopefully, the next 30 years of your service, so thank you.
He's probably the one supervisor that will be here for the 60-year anniversary. Okay, thank you, Board, and again, congratulations. Okay, our second item of business, public comment time. It's time for the public to address the board on any items that are not on today's agenda, but under our preview, if there's anyone who would like to address the board, step forward and state your name and address for the record. I think everybody's here for agenda items, so thank you. We'll close public comment period time and bring them back to the board for Board of Supervisor matters. Supervisor Ennis?
Yes, yes, some good news as far as our highways. Highway 190 moving forward to be widened from Poplar to Highway 99 in what they call shoulder stabilization project, which they did from Highway 65 to Poplar. There'll be prominent crossings, there will be turning lanes, but this is moving forward. It's, it just goes to show you how Measure R is helping us team with Caltrans and we put up $4 million and in return, we got $17 million back from the state. So it's a $21 million project. Hopefully be moving forward next year and get that road widened and get some of the traffic off Olive Avenue. So it's kind of unusual sometimes when you see a county road that's better than a state highway, but in this case, Olive Avenue was a lot better shaped than Highway 190. So this is good news for the people of our area and hopefully it will draw people in. I'd also like to say, four of the five supervisors this morning have got our adoption week ties on, so we're kind of proud of those, so that's something else that I just wanted to mention this morning. In fact, Jean and I are twinsies today. That's all I have.
All I'd like to point out is our supervisor from District 5 can't count, it's three, two.
Oh, that's right. I thought, well, I was counting in Jean, so.
I appreciate that.
That's all I have.
And I will say on behalf, in defense of Mr. Ashida, that I saw him with his tie on yesterday, it was absolutely unnecessary to even wear a tie, but last, you know, time goes by quickly, but we haven't met for two weeks. And two weeks ago, we were at the CSAC Conference in Monterey. I chair the Government Finance and Operations Committee. One of the major issues at that conference had to do with governance of California. While we were there, the report came out from the LAO's office of the projected 20, almost $21 billion deficit expected over the next, then, 19 months in California. And of course, a big issue has to do with governance in California and there's, there are many different movements afoot to look at state government and how it operates and make changes to that. And so we had presentations by various organizations about various ways to do that. So I think you're going to see there's an initiative that's being pushed right now. And there was an effort made really to try to get the different organizations together to come forward with one proposal. Otherwise, it's going to be rather confusing to the voters if they see various initiatives on the ballot, which one should I vote for, which one should, which one should I support and not support. But anyway, I just want to let you know that there is great consternation out there about California, its governance, and I think it really is triggered by its finances. So it was a good conference, an opportunity to network with a lot of our colleagues. I think most of us in Tulare County feel pretty good about being in Tulare County and not someplace else because a lot of counties are suffering to a degree that we are, have been able to avoid and I will say that it's because of some divine interference on our part to help us make some decisions in the past, which have placed us in the position today that have given us more flexibility and physical and fiscal robustness in comparison to a lot of our neighbors. So we're grateful for that. Thanks.
Supervisor Ennis. I would just like to say that this Friday, I'm going to be going to the inaugural meeting, myself, Supervisor Ennis, and Supervisor Ashida for the Joint Powers Authority that we have formed between Fresno County and our county in Tulare, which is going to equal zero increase to health premiums this year for our employees, which is a very positive thing. So I feel really strongly about that and I'm very excited to be going to that meeting to see how we can continue to provide great service to our employees and control a very often out-of-control cost that our employees face. And then the last thing that I wanted to say was I participated in a conference, CalCog, California Council of Governments Conference, yesterday in San Diego with Supervisor Ennis and Ted Smalley. And it was, we did get some positive news, very little, but the general theme of the conference from the various speakers was one that we need to be very concerned about and that is due to rising federal deficits and probably continuing to rise federal deficits and state, the state financial situation and the state billion-dollar, billions of dollars deficit, which the report came out and it's about $20 billion over the next fiscal year. You know, we're going to be losing and seeing declining levels of infrastructure investment and transportation investment, and that's really scary for an area that is in the, probably in the top five counties in the entire state as far as our road network that we have within here, within the county. So very high concern, but we're lucky to have good people and lucky that we do have Measure R here in Tulare County and hopefully we can continue to supplement the road infrastructure that we can with money that we do have available that we've generated ourselves. So it's great to be a self-help county and there are counties throughout the state that are really wishing they were in our shoes.
Lots of road projects. This last week, Caltrans put some of the finishing touches on Mooney Boulevard in Visalia, creating the three lanes of travel, which I noticed did seem to lighten up the flow. Traffic flowed a lot better on Mooney Boulevard than it has in years past on the Black Friday. And I know I was, I was out at one of the malls and there was no parking, so the parking was still difficult in the malls, but getting there wasn't quite as bad as it has been in the past. So most of Mooney Boulevard has the striping on it. It seems to be working very well. A couple of weeks ago also, we, Caltrans did groundbreaking on 198, one of the rare pieces of highway that runs through my district. Most road projects are in the other districts. And you see, we gotta talk about Mooney and 198. So between 99 and Hanford, we'll end up with a full freeway in between those two points. So we're excited about that and the county has a, TCAG has a $16 million investment in that project. And that was a project that potentially was going to be put off for another couple, three years, but made the cut because of some of those matching muddies that we had. Last of all, last weekend, or two weekends ago, since you've not been here for a while, I observed something that was a little disturbing and thought the public needed to have maybe a heads up. From time to time, you see tables set up in front of prominent stores, Walmart, Target, Save Mart, and folks are out there having people sign petitions, initiatives. So I sat back for a few minutes, observed one gentleman who had a table with several things spread out and the big sign said, "Save the Valley's Water." And he was screaming at the top of his lungs, "Save the water, save the water, sign here." I approached him and said, you know, "I'd like to read what you're getting people to sign." And sure enough, there was an initiative there about the water bond and then there were three others. And when I said, "What are these?", he said, "Oh, this, this all has to do with saving the water." And it had nothing to do with saving the water. So buyer beware when you step up to these tables. Most people thought they were signing multiple petitions to save our water when in fact they were signing California Constitutional Convention things and other things. So buyer beware when you see folks set up in front of a large store screaming at the top of their lungs, "Save the water." That might not be what you are signing. And know that those people are getting paid for those signatures that they receive. The valid signatures they receive, they receive anywhere from $2 up to $7 for if they can get you to register, vote there. So again, be careful of what you're signing because the people telling you what you're signing isn't always telling you the truth. Okay, with that having been said, I'd like to announce we do have a 10 o'clock conference call with outside council. So when the 10 o'clock hour reaches, we will adjourn the meeting at wherever we were at or, and we will move to a closed session for our telephone conference with our outside council and then we will return shortly thereafter. So I don't know what public hearing we'll be in, but when the 10 o'clock hour comes, I will adjourn the meeting for a short time so that we can go to our phone call. Okay, gentlemen, let's consider the consent calendar. I do have a request to pull item number 26 by Supervisor Vanderpool. Are there any other items that need to be pulled by the board? Any by the public? Wish to pull any consent counter item?
Chairman, if not, I move approval of the consent counter items 8 through 47, absent item 26.
I'll second that. Moved by Worthy, seconded by Ennis. It's kind of a tie. Cast your votes and all is approved. We'll now consider item number 26. Mr. Raper?
Chair members of the board, this is a request of the Board of Supervisors to rescind Resolution Number 2005-0229, which was adopted May 3, 2005. And what we're also requesting the board to do is adopt a new indemnification and cost recovery agreement procedure for land use entitlements, which authorizes the RMA Director to sign such agreement and would allow the county council to amend the agreement from time to time as may be needed. The 2005 indemnification agreement was like a three or four-step process. The first step, they had to apply for an, had to fill out an application. The second step, they had to complete the indemnification agreement. And then the third step would be looking at the resource in terms of to indemnify the county. And when you have an appeal, depending upon the type of an appeal, another indemnification agreement would have to be entered into because it's a threat of litigation. The concept with the proposal before the board today is to simplify the process and have a one-step process, which is an indemnification agreement and cost recovery agreement. Our previous indemnification agreement did not include the cost recovery program that we have and the board has implemented for certain types of projects. This will be a one form, the applicant will complete, it'll go with the application and we'll proceed with the application and collect the appropriate fees as we go through the process. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Mr. Chairman? I actually pulled this item because I have had several constituents approach me with concern about the concept of 100% cost recovery. Now, now I understand and I agree with the concept because it is good business practice to at least cover your costs for the item that you're producing. And in this case, we would be issuing special use permits and we should definitely be covering our costs. However, there are certain elements of this that need to be considered. You know, we, I am certainly an advocate for running the county like it's a business. However, we are also providing a service to our constituents and overburdening those constituents, especially those with businesses seeking a special use permit, in my opinion, is not good business and we, and we do provide a service. Now, they do need to cover their costs and I know that we're all facing difficult financial times and all of our budgets within the county are hurting, but I think we just need to approach this very carefully. And in outside conversations with both constituents and the Resource Management Agency Department, you know, it is my understanding that the new practice is going to be a weekly or semi-weekly phone call to update on the status of a special use permit. Now, there are certain things that we should be charging time for and there are certain things we should not. In my opinion, if it's a county-initiated call, I'm, I'm very scared to say, okay, well, go ahead and charge that because if I was a constituent applying for a special use permit, boy, if I would see the number 6247000 show up on my caller ID, I would not answer that call because I know I'm going to get charged $100 an hour for that call.
Then your application wouldn't be processed.
No, and I understand, I understand that, but it just, it really concerns me because I, you know, I understand if there's a change to the application, a change to the scope of the project, or maybe information seeking and gathering, but to charge for status updates and for brief conversation, that, to me, just seems a little bit excessive. So I wanted to pull this item and at least have a, have a public or at least a board discussion regarding this item and maybe set some parameters around it as far as what should be charged and what shouldn't be.
And I concur. Basically, in dialogue with the project review supervisor this morning, I asked her if the staff was calling the applicants as previously requested. And some of them are and some of them have not initiated that process yet. So we also talked about a five-minute phone conversation, is do they record their time? And the answer was no. However, if the RMA staff is calling an applicant and, you know, going over the application, especially if it's a new application or something that we requested and they have not provided, then absolutely we would charge their time because it's going to take more than five minutes to get into that kind of discussion. So from a perspective and a policy program, should the, the board concur with the concerns of Supervisor Vanderpool, that we would not charge for a five or 10-minute conversation, but if it gets into a 15-minute situation where the, either the consultant or the applicant is going on for, you know, 15 to 30 minutes or an hour, then certainly we would want to charge that time for that application. And the other part was is that at times, we have consultants that spend two, three hours on the phone and certainly, we certainly want to charge them for that time as well. The, the other part of this, this new process is that we have provisions and it's basically a contractual agreement between the county and the applicant that puts them on notice that if they're billed and they don't pay within 30 days, and then we cease operations and working on the application. If they don't pay it within 45 days, and then basically we deem the application withdrawn. And what this will help us do to clean up a lot of old, old kind of applications that we had out there in the past and they just were not moving. And so since I've been here in October, project review staff have been cleaning up the old files by sending out letters to those that have been a year, two years, three years old and still quote, "on our books" and giving them a 30-day period in which to respond and let us know what their intent is. And if there was no response or no intent, then we basically withdrew the application and closed the file. If there was any money left over, we would refund that, but if there was money due, we certainly would bill that. When I got here in October, we had an outstanding balance of almost $200,000 in November of last year of pending billings. Today, through the efforts of project review in terms of keeping track of their billable time, where they're at on their deposits, and, and working on the applications, we're only down to $120,000. So that outstanding balance is declining and that's due to the work of Roger Hunt's group as well as the project review team and staying closely in contact with the applicants and managing their project, not only on the planning side, but also on the billing side. Before we came here, the planners were only worried about the project, not so much Before we came here, the planners were only worried about the project, not so much with the financial segment, and we have to work together. And so that was another attempt that we did. The other thing that we have initiated is that prior to going to public hearing, what we do is anticipate what the total costs are going to be for the public hearing, for the fish and game fees and recording fees, and we get the deposit from the applicant at that point. And this way, we're not in the rears and billing them in the future, and so we're trying to improve that process as well. So hear the message loud and clear from Supervisor Vanderpool, and if it's the concurrence of the board to take that approach, then certainly, we will implement that.
Who's first?
I just had one question, based on something you had said. What is the current cost, the current fees that are paid by applicants for special use permits versus the projected cost to the applicant under this new policy?
The fees are established by resolution of the board, and they're deposits. And normally, what happens is that the fish and game fees are not collected as part of the deposit, and that's almost $2,000. Depending upon the type of application, it could be processed within the deposit. If it's a more complicated process, then we would need to get another deposit from the applicant to cover that cost. And a lot of times, well, not a lot of times, but in certain circumstances, it could be twice, three times, four times as much as the original deposit, depends upon the complexity of the project.
Thank you.
I certainly have no problems with the concept of not billing people for a quick update on their project. What I wanted to say is, it seems to me that the county's responsibility is to be very diligent in what we are charging people, in terms of not only the hourly rate, but the time actually spent. One thing I've appreciated about Mr. Raper is that, you know, we're looking always for opportunities for expediting processes. You know, we now have discretionary acts, which sometimes require public input, public hearings, and it may be possible for us to circumvent those by creating rules of engagement that say, if you're going to do this, be prepared to do, and you fill in the blank, a lot of things you have to do. And I think that's very wise, because having been around this game for 11 years, I have watched the typical kind of a report coming down out of a hearing, that will say, here's the conditions of your approval. Well, guess what? They're the same every single time. So why go through a hearing process to just tell people what we already know in advance, these are going to be your conditions? We can establish those conditions in advance, if you wanted to pursue this particular special use permit, here's the conditions you're going to have to meet. We may be able to avoid a lot of the expenses we now incur because of a public process, which is very long and drawn out. So I believe that is where we can be most effective, is how do we continually look at our processes to make them more efficient, eliminate costs where they're not necessary? This should be just where it's absolutely necessary, from a due process standpoint, that we actually have these kinds of hearings. If we can get rid of them, that's how we're going to save money for our people.
Right.
And that's why I'm opposed to, I know our chairman likes the idea of a CPI, but a cost of living improvement or increase that occurs every year based upon some number out there in the economy. I don't like that, because we have often, as we've gone through different cost analyses, we sometimes find that some go up and some go down. If we just had a CPI, they just go up automatically. We need to always be looking at ways to operate more efficiently, and look for savings. And one of the problems with government is that when it has the monopoly on something, which we do, when somebody wants to do something discretionary on their property, they can't go to somebody else and get this work done, they have to go to the county. We have to be very, very careful that we do not take advantage of that position. Operating like a business, the way to think is, if somebody else could do this job, could they do it more efficiently than us? And that's how we should always look at our job, because there isn't anybody else that can do that. We can't just hand it off to somebody else. We do the work, for the most part. And so we need to be careful about how we administer our program. So I think that's the real way of saving money for people. I fully believe that full reimbursement is necessary, because again, it's an act that people are asking for services, it's not something that we force upon them, they're asking to do something with their property and make changes. And that's, so the general public shouldn't be paying for that benefit to that individual. But we've got to be very, very careful about efficiencies. And one thing, also, one last thing, I think it's appropriate to say that this particular job should take X number of minutes or hours. That's a guideline. Sometimes we can do it for less than that. And if it takes a whole lot more than that, we need to look at our own efficiencies and maybe saying, well, even though it took me two hours, and it should have taken me an hour, I'm not going to bill the two hours, even though it took me that much time, because the hour is what it should have taken me. I screwed up here, or I screwed up there, it took me longer than I thought, you know, those are the kind of things. To me, those are guidelines, they're not hard and fast rules, because if we just say in advance, it's going to take this many hours, and we do it for half that, we should give the benefit back to the applicant. It's not to the county's benefit, it's to the benefit of the applicant.
And the concept of cost recovery is that if we do not use all of the deposit, they absolutely get their balance remaining back to them, and that's the concept. Just another, since I have this opportunity, just another word for project or planning branch, is that we've created a number of teams, and I can't remember if we presented our team concepts to the board, and with the permission of the CIO and the county clerk, we'd like to make that presentations to you. But we have a dairy team that we created, we have the code amendment team that we've created, that all the project planners are getting involved, and they're going outside their comfort zone, and they're actually looking at what the ordinances are, and the concept is to expedite and streamline whenever and wherever we can. And so that means a number of ordinance amendments are going to occur, the processes are going to be amended, and again, with our shrinking resources, and the less people that we will have at some point in time, is we need to be able to expedite these applications very quickly with the staffing that we do have. And so that's our goal, and we're continually working toward that.
Okay. I certainly appreciate that we're going to do some follow-up calls on these projects. A lot of times, we receive calls, and people believe that their project fell in a black hole. So even though they may think they're being annoyed by an update, I assure you, they're going to be pleasantly annoyed versus not knowing where they are in the process. Since I've been on the board, these special use permits are something I really feel that we need to eliminate, most of them. And that goes through, that goes through the ordinances and the changes that we're going to be making, and I'm glad you mentioned your teams. There are properties that are mis-zoned in this county, and have been for 40 years. Then we go and charge somebody 5,000 bucks to get a special use permit, because it's mis-zoned. And I'm very glad to hear that we're going to have a group working on that. Mostly, special use permits that we see, I believe property a lot of times are mis-zoned from the start, and we're forcing an extra cost on people that we shouldn't be, but because of the law, we are. That's why the general plan update and the ordinance update is extremely important in this process.
Right. And keep in mind, our code amendment team is in the interim of a massive zoning ordinance update. And so what we're trying to do is take care of the processes now, and then as we go into the total rework of the zoning ordinance, that the primary directive is to expedite and to simplify, and that would be our goal in doing that. And so that's where we're at today, and that's where we want to go in the future.
I have one specific question. You mentioned the fishing game fee.
Yes, sir.
Excuse the pun, but who's on the hook for that? If we process the application, do we automatically pay the fee and then get it reimbursed by the applicant, or is the applicant billed by fish and game?
We are requiring that money to be paid up as prior to going to public hearing.
What do we do now?
Right now, we require them to pay that prior to going to public hearing, and we record those documents. And we cause that check to be cut to the county on behalf of the fish and game. Prior to this, is that, another procedural thing that we've changed, is that once an application was acted on by planning commission, it was up to the applicant to record all these documents. And I said, no, that's, you know, disservice to the client, we need to record those documents, first of all, for control, and secondly, to expedite those recordings. Once all the appropriate documents are signed in return, we record those. We take up the notice of determination to the board clerk, and they file that, we pay them the fish and game fee with a county check that they've deposited, the applicant has deposited to the county.
Okay, for the record, I'm for full cost recovery. How we get there, I think ought to be up to Jake and his team. Supervisor Vanderpool.
And I just want to make one more point, and that, I agree with what my fellows colleagues have said, and that I agree with the concept, I agree with improved efficiency, any way that we can become more efficient as a county government, we need to, especially with declining resources, and just the perception that the public has of us. I'm just for, in this specific case, this blanket concept of 100% cost recovery, I know that there are going to be situations where we are going to be charging less, I just think that there needs to be some specific parameters, just let the applicant and let the public know, hey, you will be charged in this process for this, 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 and this. And that way, they know. And that's all I'm saying. I agree with the concept, I agree with the process, I just think the public or the applicant has the right to know what they're going to be charged for, not just the blanket 100% cost recovery, because they don't know what that's going towards. And that's my real point.
And what we will do is do some internal procedures and policies, and we will advise the CIO, and he can distribute those to the board to advise you what those are, and then if you do have concerns or questions, then we'd be happy to respond to them. Just one other note, I wanted to thank County Council for their support in reviewing and help moving the indemnification and cost recovery agreement forward. They did a lot of editing for me, and took out the word "city" and put the "county" in where I missed it, and made sure it was legally correct. So I do appreciate their support.
Any other questions? I'll move approval. Second. Moved by Ashida, second by Worthy. Janamus, thank you. Okay, we'll move to our first public hearing, item number four, request from RMA to consider vacation of a road, or alley, or road and alley. I don't call it a road, though, because I've seen it.
Good morning, Britt Fussell, Assistant Director with the Resource Management Agency. Let me just get this computer back. Well, maybe we won't have a PowerPoint presentation. The item before you this morning is a request to vacate Juniper Road and several adjoining alleys in the community of Goshen.
Britt, I just have to comment, Goshen Vacation does have a good ring.
Mr. Coyne said the same thing, he was wondering how he was going to market that into Tulare County, but don't forget, we do have the Goshen Ocean, so we do have a facility that we can attract people to. The request this morning is to vacate Juniper Avenue, south of Harvest Avenue, and then the alley that's in Block 56, and alley that's in Block 55, and then an alley that is south of Harvest, between Avenue 306 and east of Road 68, all that were dedicated in the original map of the town of Goshen. The request is by, and I apologize for if I mispronounced his name, Domincio Santifima, excuse me, and his desire is to expand his business, which is DNR wholesale equipment. You may have seen this in the community of Goshen. One thing is, this is an area where we do have an original map that was recorded, creating lots that are going to have to be merged, because this abandonment would deny access to these existing lots. And then we would simultaneously record the merger of these lots, along with the resolution approving the vacation. Quick vicinity map, quick location map, the areas, the roadways, alleys for abandonment are where the black lines are at, and you can see here, actually, these are APNs, so it doesn't show as if there's lots, but if you take a look at the assessor's parcel map, you can see that there's existing lots in this area that's being proposed for vacation that would need to be merged. Here are some pictures of the site. This is the alley that's in Block 56, looking south from Harvest. This is Juniper Road itself, again, looking south from Harvest. This is the alley that's in Block 55, again, looking south from Harvest. The alley that's north of Avenue 306, looking west from Road 68, and the alley that's in Block 55, looking north, and the alley that's north of Avenue 306, looking east. As I said before, the roadways and alleys were dedicated by the Town of Goshen map, which was recorded in 1887. The affected parcels are zoned AP, which is an airport impact zone. The alleys or the roadways are not currently in the county's maintained mileage system. We don't see that there's a necessity for the present or future public use, and any access that could be eliminated by abandoning these roadways would be dealt with by merging the lots into a single parcel, and the owner would undertake that process, and we would retain easements for any existing public utilities that were within these roadways and alleys. The proceedings are being undertaken pursuant to Streets and Highways Code, Section 8300 et sec. The petition was filed pursuant to Section 8321. We published and posted notice pursuant to Sections 8322 and 8323. We undertook a general plan conformity review pursuant to Section 8313, and found that it was in conformity with the general plan, and we're having this public hearing this morning pursuant to Section 8324. Staff is recommending that the board hold a public hearing, and then approve staff's recommendation to vacate Juniper Road and the adjoining alleys, as described in the agenda item, with the condition that the underlying lots be merged, and this merger process be completed by March 31st of 2010. What we want to do is, we've had, sometimes had these abandments be approved, required a merger, and the follow-up step was not done for quite some time, so we want to encourage the two get done quickly, so we don't lose this in the process. With that, staff would respond to any questions that the board has.
Questions? No questions.
And if you could hold the hearing.
Hey, this is the public hearing, anybody wishing to address the board on this item, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing done, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Move approval, Mr. Chairman. Moved by Worthy, seconded by Ennis. Please cast your votes. Janamus, thank you, Mr. Fussell.
Thank you, Board.
Our next public hearing, item number five, request from our CEO to certify, review consideration information, Southern California Gas Company. Good morning.
Good morning. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I am Carol Pytling, Senior Administrative Analyst with the County Administrative Office. The public hearing before you today is held to address a proposed new ordinance that would authorize Southern California Gas Company the privilege to construct, maintain, and use pipes and appurtenances for transmitting and distributing gas for any and all purposes under, along, across, and upon the streets of the county. Division 3, Chapter 2 of the Public Utilities Code of the State of California requires that a public hearing be held to give residents the opportunity to express any comments on the subject. On February 18th, 1958, the Board of Supervisors of the County of Tulare passed and adopted Ordinance Number 652, which granted a franchise to Southern California Gas Company, authorizing the gas company the privilege to lay, construct, operate, maintain, replace, or remove a system of conduits, mains, and pipelines, including all valves, fittings, and other related equipment. The geographic scope of the franchise extended to all public streets and highways within the unincorporated area of Tulare County. Section 7 of Ordinance 652 capped the county's revenue from the franchise at 2% of Southern California Gas Company's gross annual receipts arising from the use and possession of that In Section 4 of Ordinance Number 652, the term of the franchise was fixed at 50 years. On January 29th, 2008, your board approved a one-year extension at 50 years. On January 29th, 2008, your board approved a one-year extension pertaining to that ordinance, extending it to February 28th, 2009. Then on February 24th, 2009, your board approved another one-year extension of the franchise to February 10th, sorry, February 28th, 2010. During the extension periods, the county administrative officer had numerous discussions with Southern California Gas Company concerning such issues as the methodology of allocating the franchise payments, the length and renewal of the franchise, encroachment permits, and audit privileges. Other counties undergoing the same negotiations were also consulted during that timeframe. An agreement has now been reached with Southern California Gas Company for a new franchise ordinance under Franchise Act of 1937, which authorizes the county to grant such a franchise to any person to use or to lay and use pipes and appurtenances for transmitting gas. On November 10th, 2009, your board declared your intent to grant the franchise applied for by Southern California Gas Company. At that time, the proposed ordinance was introduced, the first reading was waived, and a public hearing was scheduled for today. The proposed new agreement would authorize Southern California Gas the same privileges to construct, maintain, and distribute gas. In Section 3 of the proposed new agreement, the term of the franchise is fixed at 25 years from the date it is granted, a much shorter period than the previous 50-year ordinance. In Section 4 of the proposed new agreement, the county's revenue from the franchise will be equivalent, again, to 2% of Southern California Gas Company's gross annual receipts. However, it provides that such a payment in no event will be less than 1% of their gross annual receipts derived from the sale of gas within the limits of the county. This retains the 2% cap of Ordinance 652, but it also sets a minimum that was not part of the previous ordinance. Our annual franchise receipts from this franchise has historically been in excess of $1 million a year. Are there any questions?
One question, is 25 years, is that a typical franchise time that other counties are setting, the 25-year mark?
Well, we found, yes, that that was more typical. The 50 years seemed to be, there was nobody around that remembered.
Okay, thank you.
The original franchise.
Any other questions, Board?
Mr. Chairman, just a comment, I'm very happy to see this come for us. We've been at this for many years. And so it sounds like we've negotiated a good arrangement for the county and for the utility, and, and certainly the foundation for successful businesses, certainty. And that's what this provides to them and to us. And so, very pleased to have this come for us today.
And just as a note, our office has received no written comment from any resident on this session.
Good. Okay, well, this is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to address the board on this item, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Move approval.
A second. Moved by Ashida, seconded by Vanderpool. Is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Pytling. Okay, our next public hearing is item number six, a request from RMA to have the first reading of ordinance, admitting ordinance 352 pertaining to regulation of medical marijuana facilities.
Good morning, Chairman Cox and Supervisors.
Morning.
Hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving holiday. Today's agenda item is for Medical Marijuana Facilities Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance, brought forward by the Code Amendment Team. I'm Jason Laboue, Planner 3, and a member of that team. And the request before your board today is to introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance, hold a public hearing, approve the notices, notice of exemption for the project to basically identify it as exempt under SEQA, which is the California Environmental Quality Act, waive the second reading and adopt as recommended by the Planning Commission, and direct the clerk of the board to publish a summary of the ordinance as required by law. And just to point out, a summary was published five days prior to this meeting. This is an alternative process to the normal process the county takes, but under Government Code 65, Section 6585-6, because it went for a public hearing to the Planning Commission, this is an alternative procedure. Background for your board today is basically that Section 15.3, as it, as it exists now, pertaining to medical marijuana dispensaries, was adopted on May 1st, 2007. And that adopted zones for the dispensaries to locate in, and that was commercial and industrial zones within the county. And it also put a 1,000-foot buffer from sensitive uses, which were defined in the ordinance. And as well, a couple development standards, which weren't very detailed, were adopted in that. Your board adopted an interim urgency ordinance on January 8th, 2008, and that was extended on February 12th and December 9th, 2008. And that is set to expire on January 5th of 2010. On November 10th, 2009, your board adopted an ordinance pertaining to medical marijuana by, and that was Ordinance Number 3396. And that ordinance will add Section, or Chapter 21 to Part 6 of the Ordinance Code. And the ordinance will regulate possession, consumption, distribution, transportation, cultivation, and growing of marijuana. This ordinance before you today is strictly for the land use. And those regulations in that ordinance code will not become effective unless federal law conflict is changed or amended. The current agenda item before you today is a resolution that would adopt an ordinance, and that was, again, recommended by the Planning Commission at its November 4th, 2009 meeting. And what that would do is it would rescind, rescind the existing Section 15.3 of the zoning ordinance pertaining to medical marijuana dispensaries. And in turn, it would adopt a new section that would apply to medical marijuana collectives and cooperatives. The changes from the existing one to the proposed one attached in your packet is, the title would change from dispensaries to collectives and cooperatives. The definitions would be referred over to Chapter 21 of Part 6 of that ordinance. And the zone districts and buffer distances, that language remained the same in Section 15.3. There were some modifications for consistency before, between the ordinance code and the zoning ordinance to make sure there was no conflict. And the C1 and PDFM zones, which are the commercial and planned development and the foothill zones, were deleted to make that more consistent in the ideas for pharmacy-like uses. Again, the request is before your board, is up on the screen, and this is a public hearing. Thank you.
Any questions, staff? Seeing none, public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the board on this item, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. And thank you, Jason, for your staff report.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to reiterate a comment made by a colleague earlier today just about cleaning up the, the zoning throughout the county. I think that this is a, a good effort on the part of the code amendment team to, to look at zoning throughout the county and to, to make some consistencies. And the parameters established within this ordinance, I, I think are good for the county. So with that, I would make the motion for approval.
Moved by Vanderpool.
Second.
Seconded by Innis. Please cast your votes. Unanimous. Thank you, Board. Thank you, staff, for your work on this. Counsel, do we have time to take up our next public hearing before we have to adjourn to our phone conference? Okay, we're going to take up, okay, we're going to take up item number seven then, a public hearing, request from RMA to introduce and waive the first reading ordinance in regards to adult-oriented business. Again, Mr. Laboue, you're back, you're up to bat.
Good morning, Board again. And I'm just going to kind of run through this. This is a short presentation. But the request on your agenda today is similar to the last item that I just went through. It's that alternative process to waive the first reading and hold a public hearing, and approve a notice of exemption for SEQA, and as well to waive the second reading and adopt, and direct the clerk of the board to publish the summary. And again, that was published five days prior to this meeting. Your board adopted the AOB ordinance, or Adult Oriented Business Ordinance, in 2006, and that adopted zones and a 1,500-foot buffer from sensitive uses. And again, your board reviewed a, and amended the ordinance code pertaining to the licensing for adult-oriented businesses at the July 3rd, August 11th, and September 15th, 2009, board meetings. And the changes between the existing Section 15.2 in our zoning ordinance pertaining to adult-oriented business, excuse me, adult-oriented businesses, the definitions would be referred over to Chapter 3, Part 6 of the Ordinance Code to maintain that consistency. And the zone districts and buffer distances would not change, they would remain the same. The development standards would also be referred over to the Chapter 3, Part 6 of the ordinance, excuse me, of the AOB licensing ordinance, which is again, Chapter 3, Part 6. The request is before your board, up on the screen, and this is a public hearing. This is a minor textual amendment.
Have any questions, staff? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to address the board on this item, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action.
Move approval, Chairman.
Moved by Wirthley.
Second.
Seconded by Vanderpool. Please cast your vote. Unanimous. Thank you, Board. Want to thank our staff for...
Thank you.
Thank you. Want to thank our staff for the hard work they did on this as well. These are issues we've been working on for a number of years now. It's good to see these things set at rest. We will adjourn to closed session. Counsel, I know we still have closed session items for our agenda. Do you have any announcements to be made out as well?
You have items A through I on your board's closed session agenda. I would note that as to item H, the County Council's office has represented the Board of Supervisors, or excuse me, you are the Board of Supervisors, the sheriff in this matter, and cannot represent the Board of Supervisors accordingly. We will not be sitting with your board during your consideration of that item. I just wanted to say that.
That's the conference call that we have?
No, that is not your conference call.
Different one, okay. We're going to adjourn to closed session. Thank you.
Today is, what is today? December 1st, okay.
And item C.
Today is December 1st. I'm Jim Rousseau, County Administrative Officer, reporting out of closed session on item H to consider the discipline dismissal or release of a public employee, Jack Womack. On a motion by Supervisor Wirthley, seconded by Supervisor Innis, the board voted unanimously to uphold the administrative law judge's proposed decision in its entirety.
This is Kathleen Bales Lane, County Council. Also, I'm making an announcement out of closed session, stating again publicly for the record, I was not present during the closed session discussion regarding item H. In regard to item C, the claim of Michael Golden versus County of Tulare, United States Eastern District Court Number 1, item C, the board voted to defend the litigation and to defend individual employee defendants with the reservation of rights on motion of Supervisor Ashida, seconded by Supervisor Vanderpool, on a unanimous vote. There are no other announcements.